All right, if we could all make sure we're muted and stand for the pledge, we'll call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're starting with resignation. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of bus driver Patty Boge be accepted effective July 1st, 2020.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the tenure area for Laura Burkeby be revised to the psychology tenure area.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
Contingency budget adaption, that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the contingency budget be adapted until guidance is received from the governor regarding a revote.
Second, any discussion?
Yes, there's discussion that is needed here. I'm hoping that Laura's reception is good and/or Jeff. There are two resolutions here. You will not be adopting both. Both of them are here, Laura, so that you can give more background as to what is needed.
The one adoption is to go directly to contingency. The other resolution is if to go to contingency only if there is no in-person voting for the revote.
And so you can see the order of them. The first one says if in-person voting is disallowed, and the second one is if in fact that there's a possibility for a revote. So it would make sense to me that the board would have a discussion regarding what the contingency options are and what the contingency budget allows, and then you could choose which one you are actually adopting.
I mean, would it be best if Laura kind of outlines to the board what contingency allows and does? Or should we just start to discuss that amongst ourselves?
I can lead that discussion. Can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great. So in a contingency budget, you can't have any equipment purchases other than those which were previously adopted by propositions two and three, so there would be no additional equipment for the buildings or anything that's a non-contingent item. If something were to break and it would be a health and safety, then the board would have to take action on that. Then there is also no use of facilities without prepay by the user of 100% of the cost for using the facilities. So what that means is any costs, electric, cleaning up garbage, anything like that, has to be prevalued and would be paid in advance by the person using the facilities. There would be no billing after the fact, and no one can use the facilities without prepaying. So what would happen there, what we've been working on under guidance from superintendent's office, is they would like to see a level four adopted and adjusted, which we're working on currently in the business office, because what we had is an average of cost, which we can't do, so it would have to be the maximum cost possible for every square foot of the properties to be utilized, and then the board would be adopting that schedule. And that's what people would have to prepay before they could use our facilities. That would include everything from someone wanting to come in and use a classroom to hold a meeting, to someone wanting to use the turf field like Hilbert does. So all that would have to be prepaid. Then the third piece, which we discussed in detail at the last meeting, was we would have to get underneath the contingency percentages for admin. It cannot exceed last year's percentage of admin costs compared to admin and program combined. All that has been calculated and is ready to go. That would entail there would be no overtime for any of the main office secretaries. There would be no substitutes brought in. So in buildings where there's only one secretary in the main office, there would have to be movement of people around to cover when there's a vacancy, including lunches. So that's in a shortened version what a contingency budget would mean for Eden. I had provided the details at our last meeting.
Doesn't it affect sports also? I thought, Laura?
Sports are part of programs, so it doesn't directly affect our sports programs, but it might affect other sport programs that would like to use our facilities. It would definitely affect them as they would have to prepay the cost.
So if I could jump in here, Ellen, it's possible that what you're thinking about is years ago, if a school district adopted a contingency budget, the first thing that would come out would be any extracurriculars. There was a petition years ago to change that, and that did change, because it was felt that a contingency budget then was harming the children. And so now it comes out of the administrative component of the budget and not out of program.
Sandy, thanks. Yeah, that's what I knew of, yeah.
Yeah, that was quite a few years ago.
And in the past, it also included some provisions in transportation, which are no longer applicable.
Agreed, agreed. So whoever is running the agenda, if you could open up both of these resolutions so that Laura can share with you the difference between the both, because the board has not decided whether it's going straight to a contingency for the entire school year, or whether it's going to wait on guidance for, from the governor. So right now, the reason for adopting a contingency budget is because we don't have a budget come July 1st, and so there is no way for us to operate the plant or to do payroll. So the main purpose of adopting it today prior to tomorrow, which is July 1st, is to adopt some budget which can continue to operate the school district. It's a board's decision today whether they want to go straight to a contingency for the entire year, or whether they want to wait on the governor's executive order for a future revote. There is a possibility that a revote could look something like the primaries, where a school district could send out a postcard to everyone who is an eligible voter, and then they could request an absentee ballot if they chose, but also come in person. Of course, some of the new COVID-19 surges that are occurring across the country are making New York State somewhat nervous, so it's hard to say what would happen by the end of July right now. I would tell you that I would ask Laura to jump in on the possibility of state aid cuts during the school year if we are on a contingency budget and what that means versus state aid cuts if in fact we were able to go to a revote and have a successful vote. So Laura, if you could just jump in before we go into these resolutions, please.
Okay, so currently, we are seeing a looming 20% cut in our state aid resources, which means that it's over $2 million we would lose in state aid if those cuts come to fruition. We won't know quarter by quarter. April 30th was the first marker, June 30th is the second, December 31st is the third. And so far, we have not heard anything about budget cuts, although small cities have, and small cities have been cut by 20%, so we don't know. So as always, the devil is in the details, and if we go to a contingency budget and we have the, we no longer have the extra funds from the local taxpayers, we will have to find a way to live within any cuts from New York State. That doesn't matter if we're in a contingency budget or not. We're still waiting to see, because as you can see, the economic outlooks have not been good. We've seen that there's a concern of small businesses not coming back. So every, if we don't have an increase in our taxes, we have that much less in resources to work with to sustain the cuts that could come from the governor, understanding the fact that we just simply do not have any guidance or direction on where he is going with these state aid cuts.
Laura, can I just interject for one second and ask, is there always the possibility? I know you said the last marker date was December 30th. Is, I'm just gonna speak hypothetically here. There's no promise that once December 30th comes that he won't enact a second round of dates for potential reduction in state funding, correct?
Well, what appears he has done is April 30th, June 30th, December 31st, and then their budget, the state's budget year ends March 31st. So that's not when he has to give the cuts. That's when he has to see if revenues are 1% below the budget or expenditures exceed the budgeted by 1%. So all of those are the things that the governor and the director of budget are looking at to determine how they need to help close their gaps in resources for the state. And then in turn, then they have to figure out how they're going to push it back down on the municipalities that receive aid from the state.
So I guess what I was trying to say is, these dates aren't like, once we pass them, it's not like we're breathing a sigh of relief as we move forward.
That is correct, because last week, the governor just announced cuts to small city schools based on April 30th's results of operation. So that's correct. So we could receive budget cuts, and in the budget this year, unprecedented power was given to the governor's office and the director of budget to do what they need to do to keep them, the state fiscally on track, which means that where normally people will ask questions when we're doing budget, well, how do you know what you're going to receive in state aid? This year, it's an even bigger question. As we go through the whole school year, we will be wondering all throughout the school year, what we will be receiving and when we will be cut. We have typically, we receive last week notification of our June 30th final payment for state aid, and to my knowledge, we have not yet received that notification yet. So that means there's still a potential that for the 1920 school year, we could see a reduction in state aid that's not even moving into this budget for 2021.
Laura, I have a question also. If the board chooses to adopt a contingency budget for the entire school year, and there is state aid cuts, you still have to stay within your administrative cap. Is that true?
No, it's, I have to keep budgetarily within my administrative cap. So what that means is typically, if I have budgeted for an expense, let's say, for example, special education, and we get another student who moves in, and there wasn't enough money in that line, I could transfer from another place in the budget into special education. Once a contingency budget is adopted, I cannot transfer any money outside of an administrative code into an administrative code. I can reshuffle within the administrative codes, but I can't do any transfers for the budget. It doesn't mean I have to go back and recut it. It just means that we have less resources, and the only place is left become program and capital to cut.
Okay, then two other items. What you'll notice is where the highlight is on this resolution and on the other one is the total amount of the contingency budget. So I, or to apprise that, apprise you of that, because it's the resolution needs to have that amount in it for the public. And secondly, Laura, if you could define for the, for the Board of Education, what the difference between these two resolutions is, please?
All right, if you can just give me a second, I would like to just double check and reaffirm with this one.
Also, while, while we're just sitting here waiting for Laura to do that, I want to thank Jeff for spending some time with Laura in the last week or so to take a look at a budget that will be his and not mine. And so Jeff, you may want to jump in here and say something about this, because I know you and Laura spent considerable amount of time trying to make sure that this contingency budget was the right budget moving into the summer.
So the difference between the two resolutions is simply this. One resolution, this resolution says that we will not do a revote if mailing, if an absentee voting is all that is allowed, because the $18,000 is just something in a contingency budget that makes it that much harder for the district to do the best for our students as we can.
With the $18,000 being the cost, the maximum cost possibly of a revote by mail only.
Correct, and then it's only $4,000 to do an in-person vote, estimated cost. So that's, that's the purpose for the two resolutions. The other resolution says that if there is in-person, if we get direction from the governor, which we still, June 30th, we still do not have any direction from the governor, and whether or not a revote will be possible. He has said a revote will happen, and he will send out further directions, but he's given no further clarification. So it makes it hard, because to do all of the deadlines and the publications, we simply don't have any answers yet from the governor's office. So our contingent budget would be $32,851,323.
Laura, can you repeat that, please? Because it's not written down. Okay.
And that would be the amount that would be our contingent budget if...
Laura, it's actually 30 million, 32 million.
Don, we can't hear you very well.
It's actually 30,851,323.
Oh, sorry, you're correct.
That's what I have from last week's meeting.
Yep, I tried to write it down real quick, and going back and forth, I have to connect and reconnect things from my Surface Pro to get the information. I'm sorry.
And how much less is that than we were asking for? How much less?
About $470,000.
It's a 470...
So the tax increase, the tax increase was 247, and then going to a contingency, we actually have to cut even more out to make it work, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but that's how the contingency works. So we actually have to drop it 470,000.
The 470,000 is us to follow all of the rules of a contingent budget, no equipment and the administrative cap percentage. So that requires us to cut more out of the budget than we would if we, and the other option is we can have a 0% increase in property taxes from last year. And quite frankly, the other item that is often forgotten, the amount that the voters authorize is what we can spend. It is never that they're authorizing the levy. That is done by the Board of Education in August. It just is the maximum under the property tax cap rules that you can levy. So in effect, at any point in time, if financial circumstances change for a district, and they want to lower a levy after a budget vote, they can. Doesn't typically happen, but there's always that option.
So what I'm hearing you state, Laura, is that it's not simple math, because there's so many components to a contingency budget that have to be followed.
That is correct.
Okay, Jeff, did you want to, did you want to say something?
Yeah, thanks, Sandy. I appreciate you, you bringing me into the discussion as a guest for one more day here. I want to thank Laura for working, really leading the way in examining the administrative component of the budget. We actually went line by line and went through every bit of it. And I also want to thank Lucinda, who really wanted to work on her component of the administrative budget, made some pretty significant cost reductions. Part of what we're talking about when it comes to personnel in the administrative budget is we're gonna, we're gonna have to require people to, to work and behave differently. That really goes to the elimination of clerical subs, which will have an impact not only on other clerical staff, but those folks that they work alongside, as well as overtime. And overtime can be an issue depending on the time of the year and the, and the work that needs to get done. And so again, that's, that's going to be asking people to, to work differently. The, the issue today is the, that I want to, I want to mention is the emotionality of a contingent budget as well. We've heard already about what it means in terms of use of facilities, and the board can make a choice to not allow any use of facilities. But in my estimation, that, that's a difficult choice to make, because more likely than not, the folks who use the facilities probably supported the original budget anyway. The second part of that is coming up with what's a fair, a fair cost for the, for those groups that doesn't require a recalculation every time someone calls and says, hey, we'd like to use your facility. So Laura and her team really have to work diligently on determining what those costs are for utilities, for liability, for sanitation and sterilization. So that, that's some pretty, pretty hefty work. But the other piece that I, that I want to mention, and I'd be remiss if I didn't, is that we, we, we lack some really important information as you're asked to make a decision today, and that's on when and what a budget revote will look like. And you all know that. I can tell you, I read some information in the last day or so, that in order for a budget revote to happen on July 21st, which is one of the dates that's been bandied about, information would need to be out to voters today. Clearly, that's not going to happen. So either they're going to change the, the rules and notification to allow July 21st to be in play, or July 28th may be the soonest date possible. And I, you know, this is a horrible scenario for Eden and the 10 other districts across the state, forced to make a decision to go contingent for a year, and that's a real struggle. It's a real impact on our personnel, on our community. I feel there would be some trickle down to the students at some point, particularly with some of those tech cuts we had to make, or to continue to buy time. And it's, it's unbelievable that we're faced with this, but that, that's really my, that's my opinion in a nutshell of where, you know, I see this going today.
So if I could just put some specifics to what Jeff just told you, and thanks, Jeff, it was a good lead-in. This week alone, we have at the middle school and the high school, one secretary who was out for maternity and childcare. That's Katie. Congratulations to Katie and her little baby. We have, that's at the middle school office, and there's only one secretary in that office. In the high school office, Sue Wazik is on vacation, and that's her mandated vacation that she doesn't take during the school year, which means that you, you literally do not have a secretary in either office. And so come tomorrow, when you are on a contingency budget anyways, that means that a secretary from another office will come in and take care of those two offices plus their own somehow. And that will, that will occur until one of those secretaries returns.
Sandy, don't you think that besides the contingency, contingency budget plus a slash of our budget by the governor would, would be a disaster, wouldn't it?
Well, I'm gonna actually defer this conversation to Jeff and Laura, because they're the ones that have to live with the budget. I can certainly give my own opinion about that, Ellen, but I do think at this point, it's better for Jeff and Laura to be talking about what would happen.
Ellen, you're absolutely correct. So, you know, with what Don presented previously, and the work that this board and Sandy and Laura have done to drive down the local share, that, that's just really, really impressive. So your local share has decreased over, and by that, I mean that the tax burden on the community has decreased over the last several years, which causes a reliance on state aid. All districts are reliant on state aid. The governor's throwing out a 20% cut, but he hasn't defined what that means per district. If it was a flat 20% cut, Laura pointed out, it'd be $2 million. That would be devastating. There, there's no place to find $2 million in the school budget, other than really, really going after programs and unfortunately, personnel. None of us want to be in that, in that scenario. You start going after programs and personnel, you change the course of action for students, and you change those opportunities. So we, we hope to, we need to steer as far away from that as possible. I do want you to know that there is some question of whether there truly will be a flat 20% cut in education aid. That equates to about $5 billion across the state. Education has already lost $1 billion in state aid. So if they, if they continue with the $8 billion gap that they've referenced, and that number seems to jump all over the place from time to time, are we really expecting that education to fund $6 billion to fill that gap? That doesn't seem very logical. We all know about the politics, the politics that's going on. In my opinion, the governor's waiting as long as possible in hopes that there'll be some federal stimulus coming our way. There is no new information on when and if that might happen. But getting back to your original question, if we were to lose $2 million, say at that last, that last measuring point of December 31st, we'd have probably a couple of weeks to try and figure out how to fill that, that $2 million hole. And it, it, you know, it, schools had, schools were threatened with mid-year cuts a number of years ago, and being on the front lines as a building principal at that time, having to develop numerous contingent plans, that would have completely changed school mid-year. It was devastating. It was devastating emotionally for the people doing the work, and certainly feels that there were, it would be affected. So to not have any increase in the local share would, would, would make that possibility even worse.
I'd like to point out another thing as well. When our original budget was crafted and the numbers were there, there was no thought of we might only be able to put a student, every other bus seat staggering them to bring them in. There was no thought to the additional cleaning that would happen under COVID-19. We don't even know yet what school is going to look like in September, but the thing I can tell you, and the concern for a contingent budget, is this. Oftentimes, people think the students are gone, there's no one working at the district. There is a 12-month staff that is getting everything ready, so that when the teachers walk back in and the students come back in on their first day, the rooms are clean, the buildings are safe, the resources that they need, their supplies are there, the computers, they've all been reimagined, they're all ready to go. All of these things are done in the course of a summer, which is the reason why we need some approval from the Board of Education to pay salaries and to pay ongoing bills that continue, even though when you drive past the school, just like you did during COVID-19, it doesn't appear that anything is going on, but it's kind of like, everything is still going on inside of the heart of your body, the heart of the school. But what has happened in March through June was they had transferred from being a physical, where you see the buses coming in, dropping the students off, picking them up, the kids outside doing sports, all of that, to working within the heart of the soul of the school, which at that point became information technology, which is what has kept the districts in New York State and across the country running, and students receiving an education during very difficult times. None of those costs are incorporated into this budget. So I anticipate as we work through the school year, we will be doing things of transfers to make sure we keep the building safe and clean as possible. We don't want to be like in years past, where back in the 60s and 70s, when the flu came around, the cleaning products weren't up to snuff, and schools were closed because of illness, and students had no opportunities. They just stayed home. We can't be going back those many years, and our budget, every line item that is in there was crafted to do an in-person education, and we may have some hybrid of that come September, that we haven't even begun to calculate the cost or develop what that's going to look like for Eden.
And I'd also add on to that, when this budget was... And I'd also add on to that when this budget was developed, that there was no thought to the escalating prices in many of the things that are in our budget. I mean, even in your own home, and we tried buying four-by-fours this past weekend, and found that they had been marked up at least a third of what they were last year. So we didn't have any anticipation that that would occur either.
I'm surprised you could even find them, Sandy.
We did have trouble, Don.
Oh, so a question, so basically the two options or resolutions we have in front of us right now is either, you know, we're, we've got to adopt basically a 30, $30 million budget to get a circle whenever. But are we locking ourselves into either budget vote? Because not knowing what our budget vote options are right now, whether it's in person, whether it's, it's by absentee ballot, because if we get a, you know, if they give you just a bad date, you know, for an in-person vote, I don't know, I, I just think it pigeon-told you into, into something where it, it could be a failed budget again. So that's why, I guess my question is, is it either or? Or if we go with, hey, we're gonna adopt a resolution that allows us to have a vote one way or another, but if it's, you know, if it turns into being an in-person date, and it's a, you know, looks like it's a bad date for us, can we then go to the ballot or the, the mail vote for 18 grand?
Laura, this is a conversation that you had with State Ed, right? And with Mr. Ruby?
Yes, I did have this conversation with State Ed. I was unable to connect with Mr. Ruby last night. So, State Ed.
So Laura, Michael, Michael did have conversation with, with State Ed yesterday and felt that there was no issue.
Okay, good. That's good to know. Years ago, there was no limit on how many times you could put a budget up for revote. That was back in the days when you cut sports, you cut transportation, you cut things that hurt students directly, things that impacted students indirectly. And it tried to shift the, the contingency to things that would impact the students indirectly, which is the administrative cap. So back then, there were districts that were still voting beyond July 1st. And then the, there was an outcry from the public, contingency rules were changed, and only one revote was allowed. So in the interim, we simply need to be able to pay for the bills, get everything ready for September, whatever that's going to look like. If I have to, if the district has to go out and purchase more sanitizer, more cleaners, if we find out that we have to do something different on sanitizing the buses, and we have to buy equipment to do so, th- those are the costs that we need to be able to be prepared for. So when we go through it and we're into the resolutions, one just says you simply don't want to do an absentee ballot because of the cost. Because if we do the absentee ballot, I will have to cut an additional $18,000 out of the budget. In order to afford it, to be able to put up, in the contingency, I would have to use contingent expenses. I wouldn't exactly have to cut expenses out of there, but it would limit resources. And most of what is in the admins is the network backup, the infrastructure for information technology, the software to run the business office, things like board docs and staffing for the offices. And for curriculum. So perhaps the professional development that is out there for teachers so that they can learn how to best do education in a COVID-19 world. Those items would have to look to be cut in order to afford a second vote at that dollar value.
In my opinion, I agree with Don that we should not, at this point, limit ourselves because the situation is fluid. So we should adopt the version of this that allows for the contingency budget and then a revote of any kind. Even though I'm not in favor of a, another mail-only vote, I would say at this point, I would not want to limit ourselves because of all the, all the reasons that Don brought up.
No, I, I agree. I am not particularly in favor of another mail-in revote, revote, but I don't want to pigeonhole ourselves into this or that option only.
I agree also, we shouldn't pigeonhole ourselves at this time.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a recommendation then that the board take a look at the resolution, which is version number two.
With the one I have up right now, Sandy?
I'm having trouble with my screen. It, it says. Laura, help him until I get my screen up, please.
I, I think it's, it's not this one, Don. Bring up the other one, please.
That one gives a specific date. It's not this one, it's the other one. So if you, okay, take a look at where it says now therefore be it resolved, do you see? And it's highlighted for the amount, and it's number one. The Board of Education hereby adopts a contingency budget for the 2020-2021 school year in the amount of $30,851,323 to fund legal obligations of the school district, expenditures authorized by statute, and other items necessary to maintain the educational program, preserve property, and ensure the health and safety of the students and staff until such time as a revote may be called by the Board of Education. I believe that this resolution, Don, answers your question because it doesn't say that the board must. Laura was concerned that it would pigeonhole us into doing a revote. Michael Ruby had conversation with State Ed last night and said that that is not the case. So my, so if, what I'm hearing the board say is that they would like to keep flexibility open, this number one would become your resolution for adoption, that Barb would then replace with the resolution that she currently has up here, and with the amount added into where the highlighted factor is. Yeah, I, I'm personally, I feel that the option for revote is important solely because we worked really hard on figuring out a budget that would sustain program and that would hopefully get us through COVID. And the idea that none of that would be an option to us now is, is a little concerning. So, you know, I, to just simply say that we'll go with the contingency, I think eliminates the idea that the funding that we, we asked for, the budget that we asked for isn't needed, when in fact, it really is. And to, to, to not try to ensure that for the staff and students, I think, would be detrimental on our end. Like to know that we can try to go.
Yeah, I agree with you, Jen. I think that's a good idea.
What it also does is it gives the 4,640 people who didn't vote, for whatever reason, the opportunity to vote. What I have been talking to some residents in the past week, there were some who truly just threw it out because they didn't know what it was. There were some who chose not to vote. I, I do intend to do a school messenger call, first to say goodbye to people today, but secondly, just to ask our residents to vote. Whether they vote yes or they vote no, it's not our place to say, but just simply vote. And, and I know that people were excited that we had three times the vote, whereas I'm honestly saddened that only a third of our eligible voters chose to vote. And so if we can get the vote out, if there is an opportunity for a revote, then you can actually hear the voice of your eligible voters, and not just one-third of your eligible voters.
We need to make a concerted effort through all the different organizations to, to get the votes we need, that's for sure.
Okay. So does somebody want to make a motion?
So, we were gonna say at this time, we're going to make the motion to adopt the current resolution. I don't, do I have to read the whole thing?
I would, because there's two of them up on the docket.
Well, Ellen doesn't, I mean, I don't want to step on anybody's toes.
Go ahead, Jen, because I, go ahead.
Okay. So bear with me, because I have my glasses on and it's still really tiny print.
We can make that bigger, wait a second, Laura, whoever's hosting.
Yeah, I'm not, not sure how that gets done.
That's okay, I'll, I can muscle through it. All right.
Control precedent might work for you, Don.
Don't worry about it. Let me, here, let me try this really quick.
Go.
Oh, I made it bigger. Somebody, magic happened. Okay. So at this time, I am going to make a motion to accept the resolution of the Eden Central School District Board of Education. So to be clear, I'm reading each paragraph, correct?
You only need to read number one, Barb, which said, or Jen, which says now therefore be.
Okay, that's what I was asking. Okay. So now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Eden Central School District, acting pursuant to sections 2022 and 2023 of the education law and other relevant legal authorities as follows. Number one, the Board of Education hereby adopts a contingency budget for the 2021 school year in the amount of $30,851,323 to fund legal obligations of the school district, expenditures authorized by statute, and other items necessary to maintain the educational program, preserve property, and ensure the health and safety of the students and staff until such time as a revote may be called by the board. Do I need a number, this resolution shall, shall take effect immediately.
Second.
Any discussion?
I was just gonna point out that the reason that you're talking about the expenditures only is because that is truly what the voters vote upon, is the maximum expenditures.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
All right, so if we could go back to the regular agenda, to 4B, we have one other decision to make. So use of district facilities, this is 4B. There is nothing here because it's not necessarily a vote by the board. It is a discussion point of the board. And since we're switching over superintendents, I'd also ask Jeff if he could weigh in on this one as well, although he did speak about it before. The board has a decision to make for the time period of the contingency budget to allow that reworked Level 4 of our building usage and let people use our facilities, or during this contingency time for the next few weeks, to recognize that our staff, or especially some of our administrative staff, is, is reduced. And to state that there is no use of our facilities or our grounds until such time as a revote occurs or we move on past that July date. So that conversation really does need to happen. Because pretty soon here, within the next couple of days, people will be asking.
And I just want to point out that now that we're adapted contingent-only expenses, no one can use our facilities without prepay.
Right. So this is about whether the board wants to allow people to prepay during the month of July, until you know whether there's a revote, recognizing the additional work or cost to people, or whether you want to keep the grounds and the buildings closed once Phase 4 allows their usage.
Jeff saying that we'll alienate the people that would probably vote for us. So it'd probably be wiser to, you know, to charge them and let them use them. Is, is that correct, what you were saying, Jeff?
That's part of what I was saying for, for certain, Ellen. The other part too, which Sandy's alluding to a little bit, is under the, the most recent comments from the governor's office, is, you know, some districts have started to open their campuses up a little bit, maybe playgrounds or tennis courts or whatever they're allowing to use. And school districts are required to police whoever are using their, their, their facilities to make sure social distancing is occurring, and that the proper sanitation and san- sanitization is occurring after that use. So it's, it's, you absolutely heard correctly what I said, but it's a more complicated issue than what I presented at that time. I, I was talking long-term throughout the school year. I'm in a disadvantage because I don't really know how often the community uses the facilities. I've heard about, you know, summer concerts and rec league and that type of thing, but I don't really know, you know, if it's a daily, weekly, or monthly occurrence that, that the facilities get used.
So I can, I can put a specific to that for you, Jeff, and that may help you. So one of the areas that we're certainly saddened by, and it, and it may be too late for Town Rec to even do anything with it, would be the summer concert series. And so what happens is, is that people come and they sit on the front lawn, and every Tuesday night, a different venue plays on the front lawn of the elementary school. We open up our buildings for them to use our restrooms, and/or there's a porta potty that is put on the grounds. So once the cost of that is, is considered, they would have to prepay. Now, they stay outside and use our electric with the porta potty. There wouldn't be much else that would be used unless it rains. And if it rains, then the doors are opened and they come in and they use our auditorium. So in this particular case, there'd have to be an assumption of cost for use of the auditorium. We don't have evening staff on in the summer right now. So cost of bringing somebody in for maintenance, cost of someone bringing, to bring in to clean after everybody is out of the auditorium and out of the bathrooms. Normally, we wouldn't do a deep clean of the odd, but now I suspect you would probably have to. And the problem is, is that Town Rec has to give a two-week notice for cancellation to any venue. That's pretty hard to do with weather. So that's one, one idea. Another one might be use of the grounds for a soccer game, let's say, in the summertime. Would you or would you not open up the concession stand? Would you, would you not open up the bathrooms up at the field? Could they use the turf? Would they be using the grass fields? And then you add on your piece of, of supervision required. Now, we've always allowed Town Rec to supervise their own events. The question would be, is what matter of liability does the district hold right now for allowing another organization to police their own events? If you've been watching the news this past week, the governor is upset by at least two school districts where COVID has broken out from graduation. You all know how tight we held on to graduation because we were concerned about that. As the summertime continues, people are traveling. And as people are traveling, it's, it's hard to state what will be coming back into the area. So I think you need to consider that as well.
I have two questions. Um, when you say, like, you know how people go up to the turf field and they walk the track? Is that type of thing included in not being able to use?
No, it's not, because it's not considered an organized event by the school district.
One question is, when you were talking about the concert, the music series for the concert on the lawn at the elementary, is the town, and maybe Marlene can speak to this, is the town still in a budget freeze? Or whatever they did when COVID started as far as, like, how would they even pay for anything? Does anybody know that, or?
I do not. I do not either.
Pay for it, it won't, probably won't happen as a town.
I think we should at least leave the option available if somebody wants to use our facilities and, and pay for it, leave that option available to them. I don't know how many takers we will actually have, have during this. You know, in regards to using facilities, just, just my thought.
Well, since we don't have a choice with the contingent, it wouldn't hurt if we could get a little extra revenue.
I'm sorry. What I would ask for is just to not have anything available for use until sometime next week to allow for all of the information for us to gather, to try to reach out to other areas to find out what exactly we would be responsible for, for cleaning, so that we can get correct estimates. So that when we're putting out billing, we can put it out, and people can make their decision based upon the cost, instead of us trying to bill and create an individualized fee structure for every event. and create an individualized fee structure for every event.
So recognize what needs to happen is Jai Wonko, who is responsible for building usage or community usage. Those organizations that are interested in using would have to put in that system and be approved. It's different than what Cheryl is talking about, people just coming and playing a pickup game. This would be organized just like it used to be before COVID, that if you wanted to use our grounds, you need to reserve the space.
And at that point, we would like a little bit of time just to make sure we can update the fees and everything so that people have a realistic idea of what it will cost in this environment with COVID-19.
The reason that I bring up Jai Wonko as well is, is that it was a good question that Cheryl asked last night, is there are certain rules within regulations within Phase Four of people being able to play and to use. To be clear, I'm not suggesting that we open up the buildings. That's a completely different category of Phase Four. This is organized use by different venues of our fields under regulation of Phase Four, which right now, Laura, you don't need to worry about, because even though we're in Phase Four, there is nothing this week that allows that to occur. Jeffrey, am I right about that?
You are right. I, I don't know that we're in Phase Four yet. I think we're in, oh yeah, today we're in Phase Four, I forgot what day it was. You are right about that. The other point, the other point that I wanted to share with the Board is I was looking away here, I was trying to find an email from Sandy and my colleagues. Most of the, the districts in Area Two, or at least those ones that, that chimed in on a, on a email thread, are not allowing use of their fields at this point.
It hasn't been authorized by Phase Four, right?
Say that again, Sandy?
Because it's not been authorized by Phase Four yet. There is nothing prior to July 6th that allows any organized activity on the fields and grounds. So, so Laura hasn't been keeping up with that part, she's just not aware of that. So Laura, you don't need to worry about anything prior to July 6th, and right now, we're not even sure what's happening beyond July 6th. But this conversation allowed Jeff to work with Jay to pursue that option, knowing what the Board's wishes are.
Yeah. Yeah, and we're, we're in a really, we're in a different situation than, than our colleagues. You know, their, their budget's passed. That we, we need to, I need to build some connections with the community and do my own, you know, my own research on, on why there wasn't more support to what I consider a very, very fair budget. So that's why I made those comments that Ellen asked about earlier in terms of, let's make sure we, we maintain the partnerships that we have. But we're also in a situation where Phase Four, as it was outlined to us a number of weeks or months ago, is no longer what, what we expected. Now there apparently are multiple levels to Phase Four, which, which we don't even know about yet. So, you know, I, I don't, I, I don't want to sound like I'm struggling to make a decision here because I'm going to use this phrase again, but we need to buy some more time to figure out just what the heck we're dealing with. You know, I, I don't want to sit here and say, let's allow the community to use, use the facilities, you know, outdoor facilities, when I don't have a concept of whether we have people to, to supervise and, and sanitize. More likely than not, we don't. If we're in a contingent budget, we can't pay overtime. That's a decision point we, we have to consider. You know, I know Laura and her team, although they're working diligently, don't have that cost analysis done yet. So I agree with everything you just said, Sandy, is let's, let's look at an option that we can further solidify this decision down the road.
And it, and what you know now from having this conversation, I appreciate everybody having the conversation this way, is, is Jeff has a direction that he can move in.
And if I could just chime in here, if you take a look at the, the attachments that Jai Wonko sent, you know, I think many people who aren't having access to these documents, you know, don't realize the intricate, like, I was reading it last night and my head was spinning.
All the what ifs, right?
All the what ifs, yeah. All the what ifs in the protocol are overwhelming just to have, like, you're, you know, a soccer team, if they wanted to go and practice. It's, it's, it's crazy. And then I can easily, as a coach, see, you know, you've got your list, you're doing everything you could be, but you, you, and someone who, who's monitoring it, they may feel you're not doing everything you should be. Like, it, it was very overwhelming. And I mean, I'm pro-sports 100%. I think, you know, but it was very, like, I, I had to read it like three times just to be like, whoa. So it's very.
And I would add on too, that if in fact you're paying attention to the upsurges in other states, that at any moment, and I think it was Jack that stated this a month or so ago, at any moment, we can shut the entire thing down. And, and this is true right now, that while this Board has made the decision to open our track and allow unorganized events to occur on our fields at any moment, you can shut that down as well.
And to that point, Sandy, you know, in regards to using our facilities and stuff like that, it's, you know, it's really meant for, you know, very small groups slash walkers slash people running the track and things along those lines. You know, it is very confusing where we're at right now in regards to where, just everything stands. You know, we were supposed to go to a lacrosse tournament in Indiana this past weekend. So where does girls lacrosse actually fit in regards to the whole risk of, of sports is unclear? Well, we got called in and basically said, you can't go. You know, we were going to lose our, our, our organization thing because there's no out-of-state travel, even though we're going to a state that has, you know, very low infection rate. But, so in regards to a question about, you know, if, if we see somebody up on, on the turf that's not using it properly, like they're holding a boys' contact lacrosse tournament, just to, to be clear, the cops should be called, the Eden Police should be called, and they should be able to dismiss the, the crowd because they know they're not supposed to be practicing in that mode as of right now, maybe July 6th, they could possibly do that, but that's still even i- is a gray area. Because I just know it's been happening at other, I know Clarence is policing their fields like you wouldn't believe.
Well, and, and reason, Don, is because people are traveling through the community trying to find a field that's open. So just because you see people up on our fields does not mean that they are Eden residents. And so this is, those neighborhood watches too, is, is that people all need to keep our kids safe in this district. They need to pay attention to the fields, they need to pay attention what's happening in the community, and if in fact they find something that's going to get in the way of us starting school in the fall, they need to report it.
Yep. But, but along those same lines, to be clear, if there's a dad on the field with a couple of his kids and a couple of his kids' friends, and that number is six or seven.
They're fine.
As lo- as long as they're staying away from each other, we're, we're all good.
And it's possible that if they're family, they don't need to, which is why it's so complicated, Jack. Yep.
Well, say you've got an organization that paid to use the facility, and then all of a sudden, like Don said, they're not following protocol and the police or whoever kick them off. How does that work? Like, there's no refund, they just, they've already paid upfront? Oh, too bad, too sad? Like, how does that work?
I would suggest to you that if you open up the fields for usage, that you would go back to having our schools supervise and not be dependent on our Eden Police Department to be doing that.
And that would be a heavy cost.
This is true.
And the other part too is that more likely than not, you'd have to enter into a contract with those organizations that would include a no refund policy for violations of rules and expectations.
So, so Jeff, what may be worthwhile for you is to work with Kathy Dobson on what our contract currently looks like on the ML system.
Thanks for that suggestion.
And, and this is where I just, I just wish and hope that the general public or the naysayers understand, like, complication and the, the complicated web with all of this. And I'm certainly not saying that is like a threat or anything like that, I'm just saying it's, it's not simple. No matter what avenue you take, there's so many different channels and trickle-down from everything.
Yeah, I, Cheryl, I totally agree with what you're saying, and I mean, you look at my own comments today, and they're, they're, they're somewhat, you know, opposite in presentation. On the one hand, I want the community to use our facilities. On the other hand, I don't know how, how we can allow it.
Exactly. Yeah. So I, I agree, Jeff.
God, this was a great transition to Jeff's artisio, don't you think so? So, so are we okay with that conversation? Jeff, do you feel like you have a direction?
Yeah, yeah, we need to continue to gather information and really figure out what we're able to do as a district. And I, I think that's exactly where, where we should be at this point.
Okay.
Lead us, Jeff, it's your turn.
So, so on that note, I'm going to say thank you for the opportunity to say goodbye to Eden publicly, because I didn't feel comfortable doing that last week, because I just didn't know. But this is absolutely my last board meeting with you.
You never know, we could call.
No, no, I'm done. It's like I told. Changing my phone number tomorrow. It's been an absolute blessing for me to be at Eden. It's, I've told Jeff, this is an amazing place. Please tune into graduation tonight at 7:00. I can't wait to see what everybody has created for that. It's also when our scholarships are being awarded, which is tonight, so for any parents that have been confused because their children applied for everything and didn't get anything, scholarships come out at graduation. And I also want to thank the Board of Education, you are so student-minded and so community-minded. Jeff, you're going to just love working with this Board. And I want to thank Cheryl and Ellen for running again too. I know that you both have other obligations in your family, especially Ellen with the food pantry, but not having brand-new Board members in this situation this year with a new superintendent and a new Director of Facilities is, is just really good for Eden. So thank you.
We've had a great run, Sandy, thank you.
Yeah, we have. Thank you, Jack.
Yeah, I mean, Sandy, it's been, for me personally, and I hope I speak for everyone on the Board, I mean, I, working with you has been a pleasure. I really enjoyed it. I've learned a ton, and I think as an educator, it gave me, and maybe it's just your work ethic, I don't know, but it gave me a bird's eye view of just how hard superintendents work. And you literally are on call 24/7.
Well, you helped that when you called me at 11 o'clock at night to tell me the alarms are going off at the school, so I just want you to know that. It's like, Sandy, why is the alarm going off at the high school? I don't know, Jen. But it's true, and, and Jeff is no newbie to this one either, as a high school principal at Frontier and as a superintendent at Fredonia, he knows exactly what he's walking into. And I'm, I'm really, really happy for the Board of Education that you have someone with experience who has the same work ethic, because high school principals work just as hard as superintendents, because there's just so many different constituencies. You're in good hands. And Jeff, I will leave my phone number open for you, but I don't anticipate that Jeff's going to have a lot of questions.
No.
So, and we're excited to work with Jeff, but we really are going to miss you, Sandy. I agree with Jen, we've, I've learned so much about what a difficult job you've had, and I don't even know why Jeff wanted this job to be. What you went through, but, you know, good luck to you and enjoy your retirement.
Thank you. Well, we've had a wonderful run at Eden. It's a different place than what we all started with in 2000. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. I had never, in my wildest dreams, would I think I'd be serving on a school board, especially with not having been born and raised here in Eden. But, um, you know, I've enjoyed it. Yes, it's had its moments, that everything has its moments. I think we do, you know, under your leadership, we've had a great run. We all, you know, are on the same page, we don't have personal agendas. Jeff, I'm looking forward to working with you. I've finally learned, after all these years, a school just doesn't run itself. And it's amazing, you could not pay me enough to be the superintendent of a school district. However, you guys do a great job, and I'm glad I'm here for a few more years.
I am too.
Sandy, um, so you got, I don't know, maybe six, seven more hours left. I just want to thank you for basically keeping the, the pedal to the metal the, the whole way through since October. I know it hasn't been easy. It, it can have been a, a very easy walk into retirement, but we appreciate you basically fighting for, for everything to the very last minute.
You're welcome. Eden's worth fighting for, it's an amazing community. You're welcome.
Thank you for all your help to me as a, a new member. I, I still have a tremendous amount to learn, but it was, you were a big help to me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sandy, yes, who's. I would just like to say, Sandy, it's been amazing to work underneath you. I truly have appreciated our working relationship, and I wish you only the best in retirement.
Thank you. Thank you. Our vacation for July just got canceled though, so what are you going to do? San Antonio, not doing well right now. Great. Are we ready to adjourn?
Yes.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn. Check in.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion carried.
Bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody. Good luck, Sandy.
Sandy, good luck.
Good luck, good luck.